Order this hearing of the Borough Council of the Borough of Gettysburg, October 27th, 6:00 ish PM. I know there are still folks filing in. We will do our best to get as many folks into the room as we can do so before we hit our legal limit. Quick note on what the purpose of this meeting is. This is a hearing where we will receive public comment on our intent to advertise the zoning ordinance replacement for the Borough of Gettysburg. For those of you who are not fully familiar with the project, we started this in 2022. We've been working on it now for almost four years, and our intent is to finish this by the end of the year.
Excuse me, Mr. Gable. There's a blue BMW blocking our way. We can't get in and out to go on calls.
Blue BMW, anyone?
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. This meeting has nothing to do with the Gettysburg Station project, if that is what you came to speak about. This zoning ordinance does not affect that project. Once we begin the hearing portion, there will be no comment or deliberation on council's part. Our role here is to receive public comment. It does seem that everybody has signed in. That's super important, especially if you intend to speak. As we start here, we're going to have to take a roll call of everybody who's in the room. We will use that sign-in sheet as our tool for cataloging those who spoke here. If you intend to stay for our next meeting after this as well, you will need to sign in again on a different sign-in sheet. All right, show of hands, how many people intend to speak tonight?
Okay. I don't hear any say.
All right. So as this is an ordinance that affects the Borough of Gettysburg, we are going to be limiting public comment tonight to Gettysburg Borough residents. Typically at our meetings, we do accept comment from anybody who wishes to speak, but this is a borough matter. So I know a lot of you live in surrounding townships and have strong opinions on our ordinance, but we are going to be limiting comment to people who live within the borough limits.
About taxpayers.
Oh, excellent. You're right. I worded that incorrectly. Anyone who owns property resides in or pays taxes in the borough. Given that limitation, can I see hands again, please? Okay, so I'm counting about 20 people. In order for us to keep this to about an hour, we're going to be limiting public comment to three minutes tonight. You're going to use the podium, you're going to use the microphone, and we need you to state your name and your address of residence, or the address you represent here in the borough as an owner or taxpayer. I will keep the timer at three minutes. When you hear it sound, I'm going to ask you to conclude your statements. In the interest of time, too, I'm going to ask speakers to line up. We don't want to be waiting, you know, 30, 50 seconds as people file their way through the gallery, so please, everyone who intends to speak tonight, go ahead and start and line Before we take comment, we have some comments. We have to take the roll call. So in attendance tonight, I'm going to start at this end, please state your full name and your position with the borough.
Sergeant Christopher Evans.
Mayor.
Mayor Rita Freeland.
Chad Allen Carr, Council Member at Large.
Alicia Sanders, Council Member.
Chris Berger, Council Member.
Matthew Moon, Council Member.
Peter Bales, Council Member.
Patty Lawson, Council Member, Ward 1.
Elizabeth Prito, Junior Council Member.
Sarah Stahl, Borough Secretary.
Charles Gable, Borough Manager.
John Whitmore, Director of Planning, Zoning, and Code Enforcement.
Deborah English, MS4 Coordinator, Historic District Planner.
Working the camera back there, please. Caleb Martin with Community Media. And then we'll assume everybody else who is speaking has signed in. All right, Mr. Whitmore.
So with regards to tonight's proceedings, we do have the public hearing. We did receive comments from Adams County Office of Planning and Development. On those points, they noted, let me pull up the information, basically concerns, questions about the revitalization district as a whole. They appeared to want additional, I would say, incentives requiring height increases, but we're still okay with increased heights. Parking issues regarding uses and the change from going to a maximum is discussed, specific land use definitions, the limitations imposed on those land uses then in zoning district determinations. Additionally, they discussed the family definition and no-impact home-based businesses. And looking at the family definition, there is, appears there may be a misconception as the rooming house or boarding house land uses were not incorporated into the county's analysis. The scenario they provide in their comments does not appear feasible based on that use existing and determining the best, most practical use that, in that scenario where you have multiple individuals who are unrelated to one another living together, that would become a rooming house, especially when you get into 10 individuals, that's where the greater the impact we're able to provide. We can show that information to a court and make it, get a determination quicker. In terms of the family definition, we have had comments from council members specifically regarding the provision that household consisting exclusively of two or more full-time college students does not qualify as a family unless each individual in the household satisfies the condition of being separate from their parents or legal guardian for at least one year prior. The suggestion was to strike that. And speaking with the borough solicitor, it does appear that the council can do that if they decide to. And then the other more pertinent effect, county did identify a issue with the proposed no-impact home-based business land use. As it relates to provisions in the municipality's planning code, the no-impact home-based businesses are required to be incorporated into all residential zones. If council would wish, there is the ability to change the zoning map of that, not zoning map, but the zoning land use table to incorporate municipality's planning code provisions. The language as provided was in the initial draft. I'll be in contact with our contractor for this project just to discuss the no-impact home-based businesses as, I believe that the special exception could still be feasible, and we'll just get that cleared up. But that would be something that we could also amend. Otherwise, that's all the staff has prior to the public hearing tonight.
All right. Are we ready to proceed with public comment? All right, Mr. Strauss.
My name is Charles Strauss. I live at 43 West Broadway. I've served on the Planning Commission for 10 years and the last five of its chair, but I'm only representing my opinions tonight. We all agree that revitalization is essential for Gettysburg's future. However, I believe we must ensure the methods we employ today do not undermine the very character and quality of life that draws people here to visit, to shop, and to live. My concern centers on the proposal to increase the maximum building height to 72 feet across the revitalization district, a proposal that, in my view, moves us away from sound planning principles and into an arena of subjective, high-risk development. Our current built environment with residential buildings averaging 24 feet and commercial structures capping at 48 feet is deliberately scaled to the human experience. We have two notable exceptions, the idiosyncratic accommodation for the Hotel Gettysburg, which was rooted in the specific context of rebuilding a landmark after a fire and vacancy, and tall buildings at the college, which are mitigated by large dedicated quads of open space. I want to remind the council that the Planning Commission's proposed ordinance draft did not include the height incentives. This was not because of a view, shed debate related to the battlefield, but rather because of the implications for the parcels and pedestrian experience to the north, east, and west of this now expanded district. When we build to 72 feet, we create massive structures that overpower the pedestrian. They disconnect the street level from the skyline, diminish the sense of neighborhood enclosure, and fundamentally change how a person experiences our town on foot. Good planning principles advocate for infill development that is contextual and supportive of the existing scale. We should incentivize density and mixed-use development, but we should do so horizontally and within the established 48-feet limit, not vertically into giganticism that disrupts our urban fabric. Encouraging smart infill has consistently been a priority of the Planning Commission, evidenced by our previous recommendations to reduce parking minimums and building widths, all aimed at accommodating more viable real estate development on existing parcels. This vertical growth also carries a significant, often overlooked, environmental cost. Taller buildings, combined with the resultant density, contribute directly to the urban heat island effect. They increase the surface area of heat-retaining materials, obstruct airflow, and cast deep, chilling shadows that make adjacent public spaces unusable for parts of the day, forcing us to rely on air conditioning rather than natural breezes. Finally, I turn to the proposed language in Sections 27-308, which governs these extended height buildings. I must caution the council that this language is dangerously open to interpretation. It demands buildings be, quote, "masked to fit harmoniously," and, quote, "respect and improve local character." It requires, quote, "creating a transition in scale and providing adequate privacy, sunlight, and sky view." Respectfully, these are aspirations, not objective enforceable zoning metrics. They offer no predictable standard.
Can you finish your thought, please?
About who defines harmonious, adequate, or what improves character, and leaves the Planning Commission, and more importantly, the zoning hearing board, up to subjective decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Charles. Next, please.
Richard Barvenus, I'm at, Ken here. Richard Barvenus, I'm on West Lincoln Avenue. My comment tonight is also about the tall buildings, and it's an abbreviation of an article that I, that was published in The Connection just this Saturday. First, I'd like to say that I support the idea of the revitalization zone, but I don't support the multiple 72-foot tall buildings in it. I'm sure that those who long ago instituted the legacy 48-foot height restriction understood that it would allow only buildings consistent with the historical architecture of the town. Likewise, the current Planning Commission zoning recommendation to council maintains the 48-foot limit throughout the borough, including within the revitalization zone. It has been claimed that the empty lot across the tracks from the train station found no interest from developers until the current developer from Staten Island, Tim Harrison, came along. The claim that Harrison was alone in proposing is untrue. At least three reputable local developers put forth ideas and plans for construction on the site within the 48-foot limit, but were discouraged from pursuing them. Is the difference in tax between a 40-foot, 48-foot building and a 72-foot building so great that we should allow it to ruin the look and feel of our Old Town Historic District? It has been said by the Borough Manager, Mr. Gable, that we must build taller because Gettysburg has the highest taxes in Adams County, and we can't raise them further. However, the fact that, the fact is that residents are not heavily taxed compared to other local municipalities. Our actual property tax, defined here as the tax levy divided by the current property value, is quite similar to that of Frederick, Carlisle, and Lancaster, and appears to actually be somewhat smaller than that of Hanover. I'm going to run some numbers here, so it might go a little bit fast, but I'm going to leave a, some copies of this on the desk in case council members want to see it later. The borough's own estimate of the increased revenue from the station project was $140,000 per year, as given in the Borough Newsletter from last spring summer. Recently, the Borough Manager has written that the revenue would instead be $259,000. Let's take a middle number of $200,000 and look at the income if buildings were 48 feet tall instead of 72 feet. Simple scaling of revenue between those two heights would yield around $130,000 per year per building for the 48-feet one. The difference, $67,000, could easily be made up by a 0.14 mil increase in property tax, resulting in a $28 tax difference for a typical home valued on the current market at $300,000. Multiply that by several such buildings in the revitalization zone, and we are still at around $100 less of a tax break to compensate for the lower height. Residents must ask themselves, is it worth sacrificing Gettysburg's historic character and tourist appeal for $100 per year, or even less if infrastructure costs increase?
Please conclude your thought.
Okay. Destroy the ambience of Gettysburg and reverence for the past and make the place look modern and crowded like so many big cities that people will stop coming. We can be smarter than that. If we are careful, tone down the buildings, and do things right, we can surely achieve revitalization without ruin.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, President Moon and members of the Borough Council. My name is Jennifer Zerfing, and this evening I'm here to represent two property owners within the Borough of Gettysburg. First, I represent Mr. David L. Seitz, a local real estate broker and the owner of property located at 571 West Middle Street. On behalf of Mr. Seitz, I wish to place on the record a formal objection to the proposed rezoning plan in its entirety. My client's objection is based in part on concerns that several of the proposed zoning changes may adversely affect existing property owners and his clients who rely on consistent and predictable zoning classifications pertaining to their real estate investments. Mr. Seitz seeks to preserve all rights to raise and pursue his objection should the ordinance be adopted. Second, I represent Phi Sigma Kappa Druid Alumni Association. The association has owned the property located at 343 Carlisle Street for a considerable length of time, and objects to the proposed rezoning classification as it applies specifically to their property, which would change their classification to the newly-created NC4 designation. The association seeks to preserve all rights to raise and pursue that objection should the ordinance be adopted. It's not my intention to present argument on the substantive issues this evening. The purpose of these statements is solely to ensure that my client's objections are formally noted on the record and that each client's rights are fully preserved for future proceedings. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Mary.
My name is Mary Malawicki. I live at 2 West Broadway with my husband, Michael. A large group of taxpayers and residents came to the early meetings of the Planning Commission with a particular concern. This was the need to control the proliferation of pseudo-fraternities in neighborhoods around the college. The Planning Commission modified the rezoning draft to deal with this issue, which is much appreciated, and we hope it will survive the final Borough Council vote. But in the process of revising the draft relating to the college issue, the Planning Commission eliminated the current prohibition of no more than four unrelated living in a home anywhere in the borough. This matter was brought to the attention of the Planning Commission and the entire council, yet no effort has been made to correct what would open the door to potentially devastating change in all of our neighborhoods. This new provision is highly unusual. Almost all of Pennsylvania communities have a limit of three or four unrelated people living in a home. This elimination of the four unrelated people limit takes the college student problem to a new level, except this time can apply to any group of people. Just imagine the unlimited number of cars for any such house on Barlow Street, Springs, or Confederate avenues with eight or 10 more unrelated individuals living in one dwelling. I can assure you that most citizens are not against non-traditional families. Gettysburg is and always has been a diverse community which has welcomed and accepted non-traditional families, and we have a nondiscrimination ordinance as well. I believe our borough wishes to preserve its warmth and authenticity for all of the families who currently live here and for all those, traditional or not, who wish to find their home here. We respectfully request that the final ordinance include wording that returns the reasonable limit of four unrelated people living in a home in our borough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Spainhour. I am a resident of Gettysburg. I live at 940 Boyd School Road, but I am also the president and CEO of the Gettysburg Foundation, and I am here to give remarks for the Gettysburg National Military Park Superintendent, Chris Heister, who could not be with us tonight.
So are you representing a borough property here in the borough?
I'm representing the park. We're at 1195 Baltimore Pike.
They own the Will's House.
All right.
In the Will's House.
All right. Go ahead, please.
Is that acceptable?
Yep.
Okay. I'm presenting these comments on behalf of Christina Heister, the Military Park Superintendent, who is unable to be with us. Our comments on maximum building height are based on a visual impact analysis sent to the Borough Council on October 9th and are specific to the MPS-owned David Will's House. The David Will's House is a contributing resource on the National Register to the Gettysburg Historic District. It possesses a local, national, and international level of cultural and historical significance for its association with Abraham Lincoln and David Will's. In the absence of specific plans, the visual analysis presents a worst-case scenario where all lots are developed to the full 72-foot building height. It accounts for changes in elevation and represents what would be seen by the human eye. The impacts of 72-foot tall buildings on the setting and the context of the David Will's House, as shown in our visual analysis and published in The Gettysburg Times, are self-evident. They include tourist pictures of the return visit statue that include modern intrusions in the background and students in the David Will's third-floor classroom looking at the cityscape that dwarfs the historic landscape. From how far away along Baltimore Street, visitors will be welcomed to Gettysburg by this view is unknown, but it is certain that it's what they will now notice first as they come down to the square. This change will forever alter what is most special and unique in Gettysburg, its authenticity and historic integrity. The National Park Service understands the need for the borough to generate income to support services, but in a place like Gettysburg, preserving community character through zoning is equally important. We believe more can be done to ensure both of these needs are met for a decision that cannot be undone with potential impacts that are so consequential. The National Park Service requests that the Borough Council look more critically at options to improve the tax base and maintain cultural and historic integrity. The typography of Carlisle Street works in your favor. An option such as maintaining the 48-foot building height between Racehorse Alley and Railroad Street, then increasing the height to 60 feet between Railroad Street and Dilap Avenue, then moving to the full 72-foot building height beyond, would significantly reduce the impacts of this change on the David Will's House. It would also most certainly provide the opportunity for redevelopment of underutilized properties and an increased tax base for the borough. We also recommend that the Borough Council take the time to fully understand the potential impacts of build-out through a build-out analysis, not only on historic integrity, but also on things like traffic and emergency services. If even one of your assumptions are wrong, such as the fact that you assert that people are going to walk to work when we already know that 68% of people in our region commute to work to places like York and Hanover, the unforeseen consequences will be disastrous for this community. The National Park Service stands happy to help with this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Spainhour.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Bernie Mazur, and I am the current president of Historic Gettysburg, Adams County, with an address of 53 East Middle Street, Gettysburg. There used to be a Methodist church and a grand army of Republic post at this location. I will speak today about the proposed zoning ordinance and its possible effects upon the vitality of Gettysburg, historic and cultural. Whenever I walk past the gravestones in our backyard at 53 East Middle Street, I'm always struck by a famed photograph of Mamie Eisenhower signing a declaration of restoration upon entering our building. Back in the 1970s, there was a movement to revitalize Main Street in every town USA. Blight, commercialism, development, traffic, and parking were changing the street views of Gettysburg. Bruce Catton, the Pulitzer Prize-winning historic writer, he drafted a declaration for our new group to commit to support to revitalizing historic Gettysburg. The declaration read in part, "Gettysburg has special meaning for us and to millions of Americans. A great nation born was preserved here in 1863. The streets of Gettysburg echo the shouts of American soldiers and the measured words of American presidents. The buildings still reflect the industry and dreams of eight, now 10, generations. The historic Gettysburg District should always be a place where all Americans can appreciate our past, enjoy the present, and rejoice about our future. Gettysburg is a distinctive location, and we are committed to maintaining its unique character. We value the recommendations from the Planning Commission's comprehensive plan regarding the downtown core area, which states that any increase in density should align with the area's cultural and historic integrity, including existing architectural forms. I know comprehensive plans are aspirational, but an end attempts have made to crosswalk the goals to the ordinance and a table of uses. We live in one another's shadows, not just one property owner, not just one special interest, not just a historic group, and not our closest neighbors, but all of us are stakeholders in Gettysburg and Adams County, and we all want to contribute to the greater goal, good. Seeing the Gettysburg Times inserts about the proposed high-rises near the David Will's House was a shock. Our organization once operated the concession stand there, and I have fond memories of admiring downtown's panoramic view from a classroom there. The new zoning ordinance risks overshadowing this charm with tall buildings. We are not stuck in the past. Our group appreciates our architectural styles, from Georgian to Queen Anne, and even brutalism may even fit in Gettysburg. But please follow the recommendations of the Planning Commission to keep the height 48 feet in the revitalization zone. The borough website states the commission provides the leadership for the management and growth of this economy, ecology, and environment. As you seek to update the zoning ordinance, please respect the equities of the Harb and the Planning Commission and of all stakeholders, including those who protect their future by preserving the past and the present. Thank you.
Thank you, Bernie.
Thank you for allowing me to make my opinions. My name is Tom Clowney. I'm not a resident of this borough, although I have lived in a township for the last 65 years. Originally, I'm from Montgomery County, Pennsylvania. My wife and I came here in 1960 to buy a farm because at that time, the housing development in Montgomery County was taking over farm after farm, and we never regretted coming here. We, all of our five children went to school here, were married in this town.
Sir, I'm sorry. I gotta interrupt you here. We are restricting comment to people who own property or reside in the borough. I'm sorry, sir.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, sir.
This town is a beautiful town. Every time I come into this town.
Sir, I'm sorry. This hearing on this ordinance is restricted to people who reside in the borough or own property in the borough. I'm so sorry.
I didn't understand what he said. Although I did call up the planning here a few days ago, and they said I would be allowed to come, that's why I'm here.
I understand that, sir. As you can see, we have a lot of folks here that we're going to try to get through, and we really need to restrict this to people who own property in the borough or rent in the borough. I'm so sorry. Next, please.
Steven Voorhees, 201 North.
Speak right into the microphone, please.
Steven Voorhees, 201 North Washington Street in Gettysburg, within sight of the proposed skyscrapers. All right? That's what they are. I'm just gonna say, just quickly, we don't want skyscrapers in Gettysburg. That's all I have to say. No skyscrapers.
All right. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate y'all letting me speak here this evening. This is rather interesting, what I'm hearing.
Sir, can you state your name and address, please, sir?
What I'm going to give you is very basic.
Sir, can you state your name and address, please?
Yes. Gary Castile. My wife and I live 131 South Washington Street, right here in Gettysburg. I moved here from down south in the Chandole Valley. What a shocker. The history that Gettysburg has is unbelievable, and why so many people don't wish to preserve it is absolutely plain outright stupidity. I cannot believe the people of Gettysburg wish to destroy the appearance of this historic town known around the world. One must remember that in July 1863, a man by the name of Robert E. Lee One must remember that in July 1863, a man by the name of Robert E. Lee came here with a few of his friends. What they brought with them was not only the modern-day recognition factor of the town, but mainly the economic impact to the area due to their visit. If anything, they should be erecting a monument to Lee and his friends on the square for the activity they deliver, millions of dollars yearly. Amazing. Modernizing the look of this historic town will do nothing but drive away those who come to see one of, if not the most historic town in the United States of America: Gettysburg. Good luck, Yankees.
Sharon Monahan, West Broadway. One of the things I love most about Gettysburg is the drive-back across the battlefield. Adams County is beautiful, but more importantly, the people here are kind and humble in their generosity. That is the best of Gettysburg. But for outsiders, why would you come here? Gettysburg is hours from the ocean or an airport. We revisit the same restaurants. Our retail is tourism-oriented, and we have very few jobs with a future. Talented young people move away, and the efforts at economic development have produced limited results. So unless one knows from the inside all there is to love, there is no reason to come to Gettysburg. But of course, that's not all. We have the battle. It's amazing when traveling to learn that someone halfway around the world has not only heard of Gettysburg, but has been here, but not because of the Christmas festival or the apple harvest, as lovely as they are. The battle is the beginning, and it is the end of the reasons to travel to Gettysburg. I will leave it to others to unravel the economic arguments put forth to justify the redevelopment zone. To any casual observer, it is clear that this vision will drive a stake through the heart of our economy. Once you destroy the 1860s ambiance, there will be no need for housing, to walk to a ghost tour, bed-and-breakfast, bartending, or gift-shop job. They will be gone. No single person is going to choose Gettysburg over Frederick or Camp Hill to drive out of town to work and return to a place with no nightlife or Whole Foods. Young families will prefer a house with a yard for their children over putting them in an elevator. So what happens when a developer cannot rent these apartments? We have listened to the arguments for zoning to increase property tax revenue and the purported increases in assessed property values from mixed-use buildings, but the facts will not lead to these results. Managing Gettysburg may not be easy, but somehow, for 162 years, the borough has been able to balance the budget without killing the goose that lays the golden eggs. Safe Historic Gettysburg has been criticized for seeming to condemn the station project without an alternative plan, but those critics are speculating, and there were other efforts to develop the station project property. The applicants were turned away. This vision of modern high-rises has been the sole vision of a few. Mr. Harrison owns the station project property. There is a long road to its realization, but the property is in his hands. For tonight, what the Borough Council can do to stop the further spread of extended height in a redevelopment zone is take a step forward in realizing the right vision for Gettysburg. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
Hello, my name's Daniel Rice. I reside at 234 North Stratton Street in the borough. As an overall sentiment and principle, I want to say directly that I appreciate all efforts to improve the density of the borough. The alternative to density is sprawl, and I believe we are better off adding density inside the borough than adding sprawl outside of it. That creates additional traffic burdens on the borough and the area and tarnishes the surrounding landscape, which the town enjoys. A couple of specific comments. One use that we see executed very successfully and with a strong contributing character in our historic downtown is multi-story residential over commercial. I think the ordinance could do more to explicitly encourage this form of mixed-use in neighborhood commercial and revitalization zones. The other way in which I would like to see the commercial and revitalization zoning enhanced is to provide requirements for streetscape activation, to include all street-facing building facades on corner lots. A counterexample of an area I think we've been unsuccessful with this would be the first block of Carlisle Street, the side of the hotel, not nearly as engaging as the main facade. So I think a requirement at corner lots would be beneficial. Yeah, commercial properties with street fronts that do not engage pedestrians and tall buildings with inactive ground levels are a missed opportunity for a vibrant downtown. By and large, I applaud the efforts of the Planning Commission and the council on this work so far. I believe it does an admirable job of representing many competing interests for development, and I believe the current and future residents of the borough are first and foremost whom the plan should serve. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nick Redman. I live at 138 Ridge Avenue. So I think most people know I'm a member of the Planning Commission, but tonight I'm speaking just as a resident of the borough. Just a couple of quick thoughts from reading this revised edition. One, I don't want to get into the conversation around whether height should be allowed, but looking at one of the incentives for height is a parking incentive, where 50% of the parking needs to be covered by the building. I don't know that that really jives well with the new ordinance around parking maximums. I believe you're allowing a situation for a developer to have a lower amount of parking that they've determined that they need because there is no minimum. Put, like, let's say, half of that under one building could be a very small amount of spaces, and then suddenly they're receiving 24 additional feet of height. And so, I could be reading that wrong, but I feel like we're setting up a situation there for kind of 24 feet of additional height with no real, true incentive for the borough among the incentives offered. Another thought I had was, we had a lot of discussions around whether or not student housing should be allowed in R1, and we landed where we landed, and it is not allowed by right. But one thing I think was kind of a casualty of that was institutional staff housing. I don't really know why that wouldn't be allowed in R1. Those are often young professionals looking to start a career in Gettysburg or start families in Gettysburg, and I think that's who you'd want to live in R1, as someone who lives in R1 now and proposed would also live in R1. I would love to see, you know, institutional staff housing around me, people that are employed in the community. That'd be great to have as my neighbor. And then again, I'll just echo what some other people have said. I appreciate the interest in expanding housing density in this town. I think it's, I'm very fortunate to live here already, but if you are a new person looking to move to this town, either rent or buy, it is almost impossible. I encourage anyone who hasn't a while to go on Zillow, see what's available, see what's available for rent or buying without local connections, and it is truly just, there's not a lot there. And so, anything we can do to increase housing, I think, is welcoming younger families to our area, welcoming people that want to start their lives in Gettysburg, and I think we should give them that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Public comment.
My name is Nancy Goodmanstead. I live at 307 Baltimore Street with my husband Dell. Until recently, we owned the Shriver House Museum at 309 Baltimore Street, where we offered tours of a pre-Civil War home to share the story of the Battle of Gettysburg from the civilian's perspective to some of the million-plus tourists who visit our town every year. Many of those visitors come back over and over again. I know a couple from Baltimore, Kevin and Vi. They have visited Gettysburg for over 20 years, a week at a time, because they love Gettysburg, the history, and its charm. "If you build it, they will come." This is an often-quoted line from an old movie, but it isn't always true. State College used to look very much like Gettysburg with two- and three-story buildings. In 2010, their Planning Commission voted 5 to 2 against an eight-story apartment building. Quoting from the website, statecollege.com, Charles Gable, who was a member of their Planning Commission in 2010 and one of two votes for the high-rise, said the decision to allow the construction of high-rise apartment buildings in State College was "to help strengthen the borough tax base," the same words he is using here. The decision was eventually made there to allow the construction of 10-story apartment buildings. Right now, the 13th high-rise is under construction in State College, and the town has serious regrets. Rentals are unaffordable, and there are very high vacancy rates. Like the proposed plans here, developers were allowed extra height if they provided commercial space on the ground floor, space that was financially out of reach for the mom-and-pop stores that were displaced by new construction. A great number of those storefronts are still vacant today. But the damage is done, there is no going back. We do not want Charles Gable to convince council to make the same mistake here. Let's take a lesson from their experience. An online petition expressing support for the historic value of Gettysburg has garnered more than 3,800 signatures, about 2,500 from Pennsylvania, almost 1,000 from the Gettysburg zip code. In addition, these petitions represent 1,252 signers, these here. That's over 5,000 signatures. Some signers are residents of Gettysburg, some Adams County, some just a small portion of the millions of tourists who come to Gettysburg every year. You may discount the visitors as outsiders, but these people visit the battlefield and museums, stay in hotels, keep entrepreneurs in business, hundreds of people employed, and put money in our parking meters. Some have ancestors who fought here and died here and feel strong ties to Gettysburg. These visitors are the backbone of our economy. They must not be disregarded. They care as much about our town as people who were born and raised here. They also pay state and federal taxes that fund the grants supporting Gettysburg's projects. To quote the Gettysburg Borough website, "The main industry of the borough is tourism." I am here tonight on behalf of the signers of the petitions and many more Gettysburg residents to ask you to reconsider the ordinance allowing seven-story buildings in historic Gettysburg. In July 1863, one of the bloodiest battles took place on American soil occurred in the streets and homes of our town. November 19th of that same year, President Lincoln.
Please, Nancy.
Okay, arrived here. I just want to ask you that you don't make the same mistake that they did in other towns. And for the record, I am submitting 121 pages of signatures from people who decided that they don't think this is a good thing for Gettysburg.
Thank you, Nancy.
My name is Wes Eyre. I live at 1138 Long Lane in Gettysburg. I don't know for sure, but I think I may be the only person who was living here when Gettysburg first adopted a zoning ordinance. And it all happened because somebody built a pizza parlor over on Lincoln Avenue in the, not exactly the Hoi Polloi neighborhood of Gettysburg. But I can only imagine what the town would look like if that ordinance hadn't been adopted. We're very, very lucky here, it seems to me, to have especially a place like Lincoln Square, which is unique and remarkable in its own right. There are historic buildings on the square. There are more than 250 buildings standing, which were standing here during the battle. And I had not considered this before, but when the woman representing the National Park Service spoke, she made reference to alternative height restrictions in various parts of the borough, which is a concept that appealed to me, and I think I would urge the Borough Council to look into that as a possibility. So I haven't used my three minutes. I'd like to donate what remains to Mr. Clowney.
Public comment. If we want to start a new line of folks, that would be efficient.
Okay, my name is Mary Wooton. I live at 49 West Lincoln Avenue in Gettysburg. I've lived here for 23 years. In our neighborhood, as you know, we have been grieving the fact that multiple homes belonging to valued neighbors have been purchased by wealthy parents of college students who have turned them into party houses. Our houses are fairly close together, and some of us have to try to sleep at night with loud bass vibrations pounding in our heads, and we get texts from our neighbors. We have lived with the fraternities in the neighborhood for years, and we understand that they were there first, and it was us who chose to live here. We accept that, even as the sound systems have gotten louder and more powerful over the years. We appreciate the recommendation that the new zoning would restrict the number of college students living independently in an R1 house to one, and we hope it will be enforced. Personally, I don't see how a house couldn't be purchased for one student occupant, but otherwise solely for use as a party house. Is there any way that the zoning prevents that? Another reason, another question, will the houses that have been sold within the last two years be subject to these new zoning rules, or will they be grandfathered in? Another change in the newly-proposed zoning would drop the previous cap of four unrelated people who can live in a home. This change, we know, to be a reaction to concerns that certain kinds of family are being discriminated against by the cap. I hope that, I hate that we are being framed as discriminatory in requesting that we retain the previous wording. All we have been asking for is to have some help in discouraging our neighborhood houses from being taken over by large groups. We understand and honor the many ways that groups of people define themselves as family, but we feel that the old wording, even with the cap of four unrelated people, allows for diverse, committed family groups to live peacefully in our community. Our concern is that having no caps at all could open our neighborhood up to noisy, non-student group houses in addition to the noisy student group houses we already have. Is there another, if there is another way to do it, please let us know. But for now, please help us to keep some tools in the tools chest. Also, just another subject, I just want to say that I understand that the Planning Commission did not recommend raising the height limits over 48 feet for developing the west side of Carlisle Street. Clearly, they saw that high structures, like 72-foot-plus buildings, should not become the norm in our historic town. I just want to say I do disagree with building high buildings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wooton. Public comment.
Hello, Shelley Nouse, 28 Chambersburg Street. What does it feel like to walk alongside a seven-story building? What will the sky look like at night with hundreds of lights on from dusk to dawn? Picture these high buildings shadowing their neighbors and lighting up the sky all night. Walking beside a seven-story building is the experience of a city, not of a small historic town. I recently watched a seven-story building go up in downtown Bethlehem, built to the sidewalk beside a one-story building. It looked and felt cold and intimidating. Counsel, I would like you to take a moment and reflect on that feeling, and imagine what that would look like and feel like in Gettysburg. And would you want that building to be your neighbor if you were a single-story building? Many communities across the United States have height limitations, and that is a factor that drives a person's decision to live in these communities. I invested in Gettysburg for the same reason. Counsel, have you reached out to communities that increase the height limitation and asked them the pros and cons? The Planning Commission spent most of a year working on draft rezoning. Their recommendation, after countless meetings and conversations with community members, was to keep the height limit at 48 feet. If you change it to 72 feet, this will be your legacy, and are you ready to take that chance on Gettysburg? The Planning Commission and the borough staff have been asked if a cost-benefit analysis has been completed. All that we have been told is that the station project will create $140,000 in added tax revenue. A cost-benefit analysis enables a council to take an evidence-based-led decision about total cost and benefits of a course of action. The borough only talks about the benefits. If you require one additional staff or police position as a result of this type of development, you will have lost $140,000 tax revenue increase. I believe the Planning Commission put thoughtful consideration into keeping the 48-foot limit because they don't know the potential cost of increasing height to 72 feet. I'm asking you, do you know that potential cost? Redevelopment at 48 feet would also have tax revenue benefits, potentially as high, depending on the type of project, but we really can't know for certain because the analysis has not been undertaken. The belief that raising the height limitation is good for Gettysburg is purely speculative, and council should not want to sign off on it without having done an analysis of the costs, not just financially, but also relating to costs, not just financially, but also relating to the quality of life, and certainly against the recommendation of your own planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Darren Glass. I live at 29 East Middle Street. I should probably mention I am a member of the zoning hearing board, but I'm speaking purely for myself and not for anyone else. As a lot of you know, I've been following this process from day one and have been very involved, and I've been very impressed by the hard work and dedication shown by the original ad hoc committee, the Planning Commission, and the council, not to mention many members of our community who have expressed a wide range of concerns and opinions for you all to try to reconcile. As I think you all know, my soapbox throughout this process has been about the idea that the borough would define the word "family" and use that definition to restrict, and let's face it, discriminate about who could live in a home together. Personally, I'm opposed to the government getting involved in defining family at all. In this country, that idea has had a very, at best questionable, history to define family. But I do also understand that there are reasons from a zoning or a legal perspective why there might be some need to define family. And I've been very pleased with the Planning Commission's thoughtful work, or thoughtful work in the few meetings I've been to, at thinking about how to make this definition as inclusive as possible. I have to once again express my objection to defining family in terms of who's related and unrelated, and in terms of marriage or genetics, the way that some members of our community seem to want to do. I personally was incredibly proud several years ago when Borough Council, including a number of you, and actually led by Chad Allen Carr, I believe, passed and adopted a nondiscrimination ordinance that says many things, and it makes our community a much better place. But one of the things it says very explicitly is that housing eligibility cannot be determined by marital status. Let me say that again. It says that housing eligibility cannot be determined by marital status. It therefore seems like it would be inappropriate, counterintuitive, and probably illegal to adopt a definition of family that treats a married couple different from an unmarried one. I understand there are concerns in this community about large groups living in a single home. I do not dismiss these concerns at all. I think they're very valid concerns, in fact. But I've never understood the argument why people who are related by marriage or by blood use less parking or make less noise than those who are related through, sorry, than those who are related through marriage or genetics. If the goal is to address the quality of life issues, we should absolutely be thinking about that and doing that. And we have noise ordinances and parking ordinances that do exactly that. And if those need to be revisited, we should revisit them. We should not be restricting the definition of family. Several people tonight have argued that this is not meant to be discriminatory, and that they want to be welcoming and inclusive. But I just don't see how that's an intellectually tenable position with saying that an unmarried couple is treated differently from a married one. Again, I was glad the Planning Commission recommended a truly inclusive definition of family after giving it a lot of hard work and thought. I was glad that you, as council, so far have kept that inclusive definition in the ordinance, and I hope that you will continue to do so, and that we can all work together to make Gettysburg live up to being the welcoming community that we all know it is. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are at the appointed hour, but we did start about 14 minutes late, so I think we can get in four to five more people.
I live at 314 North Stratton Street in Gettysburg. There are several sections of the proposed zoning ordinance that need attention. I prepared a written statement, and I emailed it to all of you today, and I will submit them tonight. But here's my three-minute summary. The Gettysburg Hotel, as Charles Strauss mentioned, burned in 1983. In 1989, council granted approval for a 60-foot height in order to rebuild. In no way did that decision about one property make it the standard for height in the downtown. It's totally unrealistic to claim that hundreds of new people can live in downtown Gettysburg and have all their needs met by walking or biking. At the moment, we don't even have a drugstore. They will need to drive to their jobs. We don't have enough well-paying jobs to afford the market-rate rents, which is what the developer's website says for the station project. The 2019 Joint Comprehensive Plan states that development in a downtown core, quote, "must be consistent with the existing cultural and historic integrity of the downtown core." Suburban-style seven-story buildings do not meet this recommendation. Some more creative design could help. The height incentives, there are three height incentives that need work. The green area, the bike trail construction in other parts of the borough, and the mismatch between what is shown in the graphics for new buildings and the description of step design in the text I provided in illustrations in my document. For instance, the green area says you can use stormwater management areas as public areas. Sometimes they're wet. Student housing and fraternities in the R2 moderatiz- density housing. Reserving off-campus housing specifically for students takes away opportunities for others looking for housing. In this section about student housing, it also includes fraternities and sororities, and this has been placed in R2. I recommend totally deleting the student housing use and restricting frats and sororities to NC4 and institutional, where they won't impact residential neighborhoods and availability. Also, for some reason, motel is in R2. Seems inappropriate, should be in a commercial zone. The industrial zone, which nobody really thinks about, is important for better-paying employment now and for future industries such as technology. This is a place also, in the zoning world, where those sort of undesirable uses like adult entertainment and bedding use large are placed-
You can conclude your thought, please Sue.
I am almost done. ...are placed to keep them away from residential and school uses. Every residential use is currently listed as a special exception in the industrial zone, which is in conflict with what I just said above. Those residential uses should be removed. Thank you.
Thank you Sue. Public comment. We have time for two more. All right, seeing none, we will adjourn. Thank you, folks. The Borough, Gettysburg Borough Council, this is Budget Work Session for Monday, October Thought the mayor was with us. All right. Just a reminder for everybody, Trick or Treat is this Friday, October 31, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. If you can see on the board here in the blue box, we have several meetings coming up here after tonight. We will have another Budget Work Session on next Monday, and if needed, the following day, Tuesday, the 4th, voting to advertise the budget, hopefully on Monday, November 10th.
Can you hand me the picture, please Nancy?
An executive session will be conducted by the Borough Council immediately following the adjournment of this monthly, if this evening's monthly general, no, that's not right. An executive session will be conducted by the Borough Council immediately following the adjournment of this evening's workshop session meeting, consistent with Section 708A1 and Section 708A5 of the Sunshine Act for the following purposes. One, to provide updated information and to discuss matters involving the employment and appointment of current or prospective borough employees, the terms and conditions of employment, and the evaluation of performance or performance of current borough employees. And two, to review and discuss matters of borough business which have conducted in public could lead to the disclosure of information or confidentiality protected by law. That is going to take us to our first public comment section of the evening. This first section is restricted to items appearing on tonight's agenda. That is loosely the budget. We're starting tonight with the Police Department, and then we'll move on to many of the other municipal departments. If you have a public comment to make, we ask that you use the podium. Please state your name and address of residence, and please limit your comment to five minutes. Is there any public comment this evening? All right, seeing none, we will move on. We are going to start this evening on our Budget Fund 1, page 49. That is Department 410, the Police Department. All right. So digging into this reminder, we're going to be going through a lot of this sort of quickly here tonight. Items that appear with a red box around them are discretionary spending. Anything else you see, which is going to be about 91% of this, if not more, in most of these staff departments, is going to be things that are not discretionary, meaning they are contractually obligated, obligated by statute, or that they represent work that has been previously approved by the Borough Council. Some items will be discretionary, for example, even previously approved capital improvement plans. With us tonight, we have Mr. David Stefan, who is working with the department during the interim while we appoint a new chief. We have our officer in charge, Sergeant Chris Evans, and we have-
We don't.
Okay. So as members have questions, we can direct those to either of these gentlemen, as I believe they have worked together to craft this budget proposal for the department. All right, 410, 110, salary, Chief of Police. This is a base pay. It is an adjusted figure based on the idea that it'll take us probably two to three months into the new year to actually hire a new Chief of Police. 410, 112, we start getting into base salaries for our patrol officers. Moving on to the next page, we start to, we see more, more base salaries. 410, 114, salary, professional staff. That's for our Police Records and Support Service Coordinator. And then 410, 115, we do see that these items are in red. These are wages for our part-time officers. We use part-time officers fairly substantially in order to fill shifts, in order to cover events, in order to take care of our needs when officers are sick. I wouldn't necessarily describe these as discretionary. These numbers are largely estimates of what we expect to spend, but these numbers can spike wildly depending on shift coverage needed and new events and any number of things. 410, 116, we get into salary differential pay for the patrol officers. Under our contract, they make different wages if they work after certain hours of the day. Those differentials are contractually negotiated and obligated. 410, 117, auxiliary police. Auxiliary police are not sworn officers, but they are sworn in by the mayor or the Police Department, and they serve multiple responsibilities throughout the year, including traffic direction at our many special events, or they can help with any number of things that don't require a sworn officer. 410, 135, Lexipol Policy Service. This is marked as a red item. Can anybody give us some background on that?
Yeah, that's our subscription for our web-based policy.
All right. I don't know that that's necessarily discretionary, but I guess we could stop doing it.
Well, that's for our policies and procedures for the Police Department.
Right. Yeah, I don't know that that's discretionary, though. I think we need to use those.
I wouldn't think so.
Background investigations for new hires is the next line, next item. That's also not discretionary. We have to do background investigations when we hire people. The only control we have there is not hiring people. Internal investigations have expenses related with them as well. And then we have 410, 170, which has to do with overtime for our part-time police officers who we just spoke about. 410, 172, other compensation, holiday leave for patrol officers and the chief. 410, 173, other compensation, leave personal. 410, 174, compensation, leave sick. 410, 175, compensation, leave vacation. 410, 176, overtime regular. 410, 177, overtime shift change. 410, 178, overtime court. 410, 179, overtime holiday worked. 410, 180, overtime holiday, overtime. 410, 181, overtime special events. If it seems like we have a lot of different overtime funds here, it's because we do, and that's intentional. There was a time up through a few years ago where we just had one overtime bucket, and we never really had a clear sense of where the taxpayers' dollars were being spent, so we asked the Police Department to start coding the purpose behind their overtime so that it could be better tracked. 410, 182, overtime emergency. 410, 183, overtime contractual. There is contractual overtime. Every officer's, every patrol officer's shift is 11 and 1/2 hours, and that last half-hour is contractually overtime. And that's apart from any differentials when they work after certain hours of the day. 410, 184, OT Drug Task Force. 410, 185, OT Traffic Grants. Some of these overtime funds are reimbursed through different state grants. So for example, Drug Task Force and Traffic Grants, while these do have significant dollar values associated with them, we are reimbursed through different state programs, state and federal programs. 410, 186, OT Sick Time Pay Back. 410, 187, Vacation Buyback. 410, 188, Other Compensation Healthcare Buyouts. 410, 189, Vision Insurance. 410, 191, Uniform Allowance. 410, 192, Benefit FICA. 410, 193, Benefit Medicare. Again, this is all stuff we have no control over. This is all contractually obligated or federally mandated. 410, 194, Unemployment Compensation. 410, 195, Benefit HRA. That's a health reimbursement account. All right. 410, 196, Health Benefit Insurance. As we have discussed previously, we are seeing a fairly substantial spike in our healthcare premiums this year for our entire borough staff of about 19%. 410, 197, Pension Contributions. 410, 198, Short-Term Disability, AD&amp;D, Benefit Life. 410, 199, Benefit Dental Insurance. 410, 200, Pension for Non-Uniform. That would be our records officer. 410, 210, Operating Supplies. 215, Postage. 220 Miscellaneous Expenses. We do see a line item here that is discretionary, Community Relations and Crime Prevention swag. Items might include-
Yeah, stuff for like National Night Out, stickers, handouts, stuff like that, t-shirts.
Very cool. All right.
Some community outreach stuff.
Great. 410, 231, Fuel for Patrol Vehicles. 410, 242, Protection to Persons and Property. So here we see three items budgeted. We have about $20,000 in TASER replacement. Obviously, we would like our officers to have up-to-date and operational, less lethal armaments. They do have a second line item there for duty and practice ammunition. And then we have a line item for about $20,000 in body worn camera replacement. Acquisition priority on both of these items is marked as high. So this is about $40,000 in discretionary funding that has to do with keeping our force safe, and as well as making sure that they have contemporary operational equipment. 410, 249, TASER Maintenance. 251, Parts and Maintenance for Vehicles. 410, 252, Computer Copiers, Video Parts. 410, 260, Small Tools, Speed Timing Calibration, et cetera. 410, 301, Towing Costs. 410, 310, Other Services. 410, 314, Specialized Legal Services, Specifically Labor Attorneys. 410, 231, Telephones. Each of our officers carries a borough-issued cellphone. 410, 324, Office Lines. 410, 325, we're on page 75 now, we have Internet Costs. 410, 327, Radio Maintenance Equipment. 410, 329, Computer Software Fees. So I think here's where we're getting into some stuff that has been recommended by our consultant. Is that correct?
Would you-
Would you mind sitting at one of the spots with a microphone so we can, so the folks on the camera can hear you as well?
Is it okay right here?
Yeah, you can use that one.
The recommendation, the recommendation that we made is for software that will track behaviors in professional policing that we want to have an early intervention in. Use of Force Issues, issues that are red flags that, it's a proactive way of measuring conduct that typically could be litigated. And it's a good way for the officers to have the behaviors highlighted to them for correction, and it's a good way for the municipality to highlight those efforts that they undertook to provide a cloak of protection in the event of litigation. And that's, for the relative cost, it's a very, very good thing. And the other part of this is interesting. It's different pieces of legislation that came out of the police reform period in 2021, 2022. There are Act 59 and Act 57 requirements. It provides the municipality and the Police Department effective reporting and tabulation of those conducts that may or may not affect the status of the officer's job and decertification by MOPAC. So for the money, it's a relatively good investment. In fact, it's an essential investment in professional policing. The part that I want to highlight about this is, it's collaborative. It'll run parallel to your existing human resource software. I've talked to the human resource manager and made certain that we're not going to be conflicting. We did a deconfliction. And it'll run parallel, and it doesn't interfere with anything related to the payroll function. All it is, is basically an electronic file system that allows each one of those compartmentalized areas of police personnel files to be segregated with access-protected privileges. For instance, anything related to the HIPAA-related function would go to HIPAA manager, and they would have the access to it. The chief would not. But anything in the personnel realm, the chief would have access to, discipline. Everything's training, everything's segregated. One thing that's really nice about this software, too, is it allows officers to catch their fellow officers doing something commendable and make that certain that the bosses in the Police Department are aware of that. So what we measure are good behaviors and bad behaviors and training, and overall comprehensive look at the officer's performance.
So that's the first platform there, the vector solutions?
Yes.
All right. And then you have, that's a relatively small expense, and then you have the Verizon Fleet GPS Tracking Software?
During some of the interview pieces with key stakeholders, one of the things was, where are the vehicles at, and how long have they been there, that type of thing. This tracking software allows us to provide a vendor, provided through Verizon, and it measures the mileage, the fuel economy, the overdriving. And overdriving is if you're driving inappropriately for the situation. So for instance, as Chief of Police, I would receive a, an alert every time somebody went over a certain amount over the speed limit. So geographic, geomapping, it tells you exactly where the car is and what the speed limit is. And if they went over that threshold, I would get an email, or my lieutenants would. So the bottom line is, it does provide accountability and seamless accountability. And it also does your average fuel economy, the hours that the vehicle was operational, and it tells you from the born-on date to the date that you get rid of the vehicle, how much it costs you to operate those vehicles. So it gives you a planning component for future budgets. The other piece to it that's rather nice is you can do retracing of their officer's routes. So if you have a citizen that says, "I never see a police car," you can say, "Well, we can prove when the police car was there." Or we can prove that it wasn't there. And if that, we can address it with directed patrols, so.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
I'm curious, when you said the information, some of the tracking on behavior, good behavior as well as, you know, questionable behavior, would go to the, you know, the chief, or in this case, the officer in charge, would it also go to the HR manager as well?
That's a, in the broadest of circumstances, it depends on the behavior.
Okay.
And I don't want to be evasive, but certain behaviors fall under certain rules that we have to abide by as far as some of the chyra, or creya current requirements with confidentiality and some of those things. So in the broadest sense, possibly. In the most limited sense, no.
Okay.
So I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, thank you.
But it's all access privilege. So if there is an issue, the police chief should be interacting and interfacing with them to say, in the broadest of terms, "We have this issue," and also include the solicitor or labor attorney within that scope of conduct.
Thank you.
And then the third one you have there is a law enforcement-specific recruitment screening software?
Yes. There's a software that allows police agencies to look at prospective candidates, to see where they have applied in the past, and the reasons for the acceptance or non-acceptance, or if they were discharged, it provides you that. It also provides you some of the layered bits of information. It's a better economy, and it also provides a template so that your background investigations are standardized, so that the officer conducting the background investigation would follow the format that they provide and add that standardization to the personnel file for the officer pre-hire. And for those officers that are, those candidates that were not hired, it also gives you a tracking system so that you can tab those things for deletion after the mandatory two-year period for deletion that you have to wait, according to the Pennsylvania Museum and Historic Commission. So all of those things are built into it, so it takes away some of the workload from the Police Department. It also takes away some of the workload from the Human Resources Department.
What are the terms on all of these? Are they annual subscriptions? Are there contracts?
Typically, they're annual subscriptions that are renewable. I can say that in my experience with all of those, for your, an agency your size, those costs are pretty close to our reality. They haven't ever had exorbitant increases during the period of time that I've been a subscriber to those in my past life as Chief of Police.
All right, thank you. Sergeant Evans, have you had a chance to review any of these three platforms?
Yes, we spoke about it, Dave and I spoke about it a couple of different times. I haven't used them, I'm not familiar with them, but I'll defer to him and as, that they're effective.
And it's something we could try for a year?
Sure.
If you're not using it, we just cut it out next time?
Yeah, absolutely.
You're comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Great. All right. Anybody have any questions on those three?
I have a question on the first one, the vector solutions, law enforcement-specific HR tracking software. Sounds incredible, but how, software is only as good as the data that you put into it. So who's putting that data into it?
That's a, that's a very good question, and here's the short answer. The input of the data is going to depend upon the event itself. So if you have a disciplinary infraction, it would take the criminal complaint, or, pardon me, the citizen complaint, and you would track that with certain time milestones throughout that, and updated reporting. So that would be the responsibility of the sergeant that is investigating the complaint. Now, other things, training and certificates, it allows you to scan that in, so you have an electric, electronic file. The training officer, sergeant, would be responsible for input of that data. This is not extensive data. Once you have the back, the backbone of the system populated with the information, then it's just a matter of updates.
Gotcha. And if there were, you mentioned earlier that if there was coworkers, other officers, if they're seeing good work done by an officer, that they could, they would likely give it to that sergeant, to their sergeant, and the sergeant would input that data in?
It would go right into the system, and it would be set up, so yes, the sergeant with chief, it has a, it has a notification protocol so that everybody knows the good work.
Sure.
And the same thing with some of the bad works.
Gotcha. And that's excellent. Thank you for those answers. And also, if the officers are reporting to the sergeant, then if, what if the sergeants are doing great or not-so-great work? Who is putting, are they, is that the chief, each other, other officers? Is it across the board, everyone?
That's the benefit of this system, it's rank agnostic. You can set that up any way you desire. I like the rank agnostic piece because lots of times, Chief, you don't hear you're doing such a great job until you're not. And all of a sudden, you know, it doesn't sneak up on anybody. And behaviors are correctable, and it gives us that ability to see what is going on that's right and to see what's not so good.
Thank you. Very great.
How are the reports verified?
They're verified by the chain of command and the approval process. So if...
So what I'm saying is, if I like my friend, and I want to say he's doing something great, how's that verified? Do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, typically, if there's a commendation to be awarded, that would be a verified behavior. That's typically one of those behaviors that's not necessary for verification because you got a couple of people caught up to say, "This is a good thing to happen."
Okay, so it's just not one person reporting?
Right. It could be, it depends upon who was there. But in the broadest of circumstances, it's not populated repeatedly by a colleague that just wants to populate employee A. And employee A populates employee B, it's not that way.
Yeah, I'm just curious, and what if I have a problem with one of my employees, and I want to say, "Well, he did something bad." How's that verified?
Well, that would be verified by the investigation done by the sergeant or discussion. And some of those things fall under the category of work it out. You know, it's not necessarily a major disciplinary infraction. If it is a disciplinary or violation of rules, that's when it becomes something different. But you don't put hurt feelings into this software. That's not what it's meant for.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Anything else, President?
I don't think so. Anybody have an issue with those, trying those out, see how they do?
No, I don't have an issue with it at all. I think it's excellent, especially for the early intervention in conduct management and discipline tracking. Do we not have that for all of our employees? Is there no such kind of HR tracking software that could also be for our administrative and management staff? I bet there might be. I'm looking over at Matty.
So we do have a system, it's not as robust.
Can you just speak up the microphone?
I just don't want to leave any department out, because I think this is a good idea.
A cool tool?
Thank you. So we have admins, it does have some of those capabilities, but it's not as robust. So like, I can attach PDFs. I can have limited blocks of space where I can make progress. And no one else can access it except me and Charles.
Thank you.
Cool. All right, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stephan. The rest of that department has other software expenses that are unique to the department or that are shared amongst many departments. 410, 331, Travel Reimbursement. 410, 350, Insurance on Vehicles, on the Fleet. 410, 351, Selective Insurance. PA Law 477, which is specific to the Police Department. 410, 352, Insurance Liability. 410, 354, Workers' Compensation. 410, 357, Insurance Inland Marine. 410, 358, Insurance Law Enforcement Liability. 410, 359, Insurance Commercial Umbrella. 410, 384, Machinery and Equipment Repair. 410, 410, Judgment and Damages. Let's keep that zero. 410, 420, this is going to be due subscriptions to different organizations. You know, some of this is going to have to do with our ability to cooperate interdepartmentally throughout the county and region. 410, 452, Contracted IT Services. Keeps going. On page 81, 410, 460, Continuing Education Training. And this budget tends to be a little bit higher than other departments because police have a special, a special consideration amongst our government employees. They have the highest burden for ongoing continuing education and consistent trainings, whether that be the CIC training, the de-escalation, annual weapons certifications, et cetera. One thing our department has done very well over the last few years is consistently trying to keep up to date on current trends in policing. 410, 461, Community Police, Policing Training. So, you know, that would be to see more people out on street patrols, bike patrols, stuff like that. Is that correct?
Yeah, we also use that line item for, I believe, the grants that we get from, from certain entities.
Okay.
For example, Wellspan.
Okay. Yep. The other side of that, yeah.
It's not actually close to like always at $500, just...
Well, this is the expense side of it, so that would show up on the same, you know, similar expense, revenues accounts. 740, Capital Purchased Machinery. We do have a lot of doodads and gizmos in the vehicles. 410, 750, Capital Purchase Minor Machine. So this is the first year we haven't seen too many large capital requests here in many years. Typically, we would see requests for additional personnel, additional command staff, specialized equipment, but I'm not seeing a lot of that this year. I want to thank you both for helping us try to maintain a relatively level budgetary-esque. Thank you. Anybody have any comments or questions on 410 before we move on? Great. So I think you said we then go down to 430, is that right?
We finished 430 last week. So...
So that's going to take us to 434, Street Lighting, on page 124.
Thank you, that's what I was trying to find.
So we pay a pretty hefty chunk of money every year to keep our streetlights lit. 434, 361, about $103,000 is budgeted for this year. And then for 434, 374, Machinery and Equipment Repair for Street Lighting, about $1,500. Fund 435, on page 125, Sidewalks and Crosswalks. Only two line items, but they're pricey ones. 435, 313, this is a capital improvement plan, although this one is not discretionary as the funds have been allocated from a previous year already. $35,000 for Sidewalk Replacement Program, curb design, curb ramp design and engineering. 435, 372, ADA Ramps, to cover the difference between the 2023 CDBG and the construction cost. As you may recall, the bill is a little bit higher than the funds we were applying from a previous award year, so we had to pay that offset. We voted on that a few months ago. Next page, 126, Department 438, Bridges. Five-year Bridge Plan, $19,000. Now, you will note, this does not necessarily include the bridge that we know we need to repair. That's coming out of a different fund, I believe.
Yes, this is preparing a bridge plan for the next five years. The emergency repair will be covered through another fund.
All right, 439, Roads and Alley's. Now, here's a place where it's all discretionary. We can decide to kick cans if we want. In 439, 313, we have Engineering for Roads, that's about $7,000. 435, 377, Repair and Maintenance to Alley's, about 50 grand. And 435, 378, Repair and Maintenance to Streets, slightly less, about a tenth as much. Our alleys are important roadways for the people who live here, and as we are all aware, they are in some sorry states of repair, depending on the alley and how long it's been since it was touched. The Public Works Department does this work generally in-house, and they do try to hit a couple every year to try to get those up to operating standards. 445, Parking. All right. Get into parking. 445, 110, we have the salary for the Parking Director, Director of Parking. 445, 112, Salary for our two full-time employees. 445, 115, Salary Part-Time Staff, of which we have four currently. 445, 116... 445-116, salary differentials. Again, there's offsets depending on hours worked. I apologize for the tedium here, a lot of this is going to be stuff we've gone through on every other department, but we have a responsibility to put eyes on it. 445-117, differential two, pay. There's, the contract stipulates different differentials on different times of day. 172, holiday leave. 173, personal leave. 174, sick leave. 175, vacation leave. 176, regular overtime. 179, holiday overtime. 186, sick pay buyback. 187, vacation buyback. 189, vision insurance. 191, uniform allowance. 192, FICA. 193, Medicare. 194, unemployment. 195, HRA, health reimbursement account. 196, health insurance. 197, pension contributions. 198, life insurance, AD&amp;D, short-term disability. 199, dental insurance. 210, operating supplies. 215, postage. 220, miscellaneous expenses. All the colors are starting to swim before my eyes on that page. 231, fuel for vehicles. 251, vehicle parts and maintenance. 252, computer copier video parts. 313, engineering, Racehorse Alley Garage. We do not have any maintenance scheduled for this year. I believe we do that every other year, is that correct?
Every odd year, yes.
Every odd year. 321, landlines for Ms. Fissell's office. 324, for cellular devices. 325, internet fees. 329, computer software fees. We use many different systems there.
Could I interject real quick on 325? You'll notice there is a new line item with Racehorse Alley Garage, internet is going to be installed. So that is a new expense that did not show up in previous budgets.
So this is something we have discussed for a couple of years. We have probably all had experiences or talked to people who've had experiences where the kiosks are having a hard time connecting on a particularly congested day when there's a lot of people using cellphones downtown, or if it's cloudy or storming, et cetera. So currently, our kiosks operate on a cellular connection. And we have in the past pursued the idea of using a wired internet connection and deemed it really wasn't cost-effective at the time. However, with the capital improvement plan where we are expanding our camera footprint throughout our municipal buildings, the benefit of paying for that hardwired internet connection starts to compound. And being able to run multiple systems simultaneously and have both a better experience with staff as well as a better experience for the folks using the garage starts to pay out for us. Added security and a better utility. 329, software fees. 331, travel reimbursement. 350, vehicle insurance. 352, liability insurance. 354, workers' comp. 356, insurance on property. 359, commercial umbrella. 361, electricity. 364, sewer. They're paying their portion of the office's expenses here as well as the garage. 366, water. 368, stormwater. 373, repair and maintenance to buildings. 374, machinery and equipment repair. 391, credit card merchant fees. This has to do with use of the phone app, credit card processing for permits online, that sort of stuff, correct?
Kiosk.
Kiosks. Yep. Where'd I leave that? 420, dues, subscriptions and memberships. 452, IT services through Trista. 460, continuing education and training, including an annual conference as well as the Bartle and Bartle programs we talked about previously. 740, capital purchases machinery. 750, capital purchase minor machine. And oh, we've got some red stuff here. So let's see. Ms. Fissell, can you tell us about these items?
This would be the kiosks to, for a new kiosk at the parking garage?
We have to replace the kiosks?
It was recommended. There's been some issues with the old, with the current ones we've had, programming-wise and things, and so we're looking into other options.
So does that mean we're just like replacing the guts or are we replacing the entire unit? Are we going to be able to reuse the like $30,000 worth of doors we just bought or?
So it would be a new unit because it would be the same as the handhelds that we use. So everything would be the same.
Okay. So the $36,000 line item, that is a number of kiosks, I'm assuming?
Yes, and I believe this was also budgeted for a few on-street to try.
Oh, okay. So how many kiosks total is 36,000?
I don't remember what Charles had spoke about, but I think it was five we had talked about.
I don't remember the exact number, but we are going to, we would like to pile it a couple on-street meters, or kiosks, rather.
Do you have areas in mind for that?
Becca, are you able to speak to that?
Not in particular. I know we've tried the square already. I know Baltimore Street was mentioned, but no other, nobody else has made any suggestions. So I'm open. We've tried the borough lot as well. We tried the square, the borough lot. We tried down on the sixth block, fifth block of Baltimore Street prior. But we've never tried like the second or third block of Baltimore, or York Street, or Chambersburg Street.
Are there specific areas that are more problematic?
More problematic as far as-
Stuff like the replacement schedule that you were talking about?
Not in particular with that because we, meters, we can replace them. You know, if, we can move them around if they need somewhere else. But if you're looking at more usage or things like that, we do have some of that data, but we wouldn't have pinpoint exact like second block of Baltimore, you know, that it would be more beneficial there. And how many people are using the app versus coin there? We wouldn't, it's kind of grouped all in together. Like all the short-term are grouped together, so it's kind of hard to pinpoint that exact data.
Will you be using the data, though, to eventually determine where you're going to?
I mean, I can try and I, I mean, it's going to be mostly user feedback.
What is the issue with the current one?
With the current kiosk at the parking garage?
Yeah.
I know for the past two years, I think President Moon can speak to it, that it was, especially the Christmas festival rate, it was not good. They don't have the greatest customer service. And when something goes down, we're unable to, like for the Christmas festival, nobody was there for the weekend. They are trying to work with us and work through solutions, but that's not, I mean, we can't guarantee that. Whereas the handheld software that we use now, they are, we've used them for 12 years and they've been very reliable.
How much of the dysfunction in the garage is due to the cellular connection? How much of it is due to equipment failure for something other than a network connection?
Most of the time, the internet connections are, I mean, when it's down, the lowest level is the worst one. With all the, I guess, the concrete in the lower level, it is, it goes down more. But generally, the two on the upper levels, they don't go down that often. And when they do, it's maybe a minute, two minutes. So when, there's also, there's like a bill acceptor that's been down on Level 3 and it's been down. We've been trying to get a replacement, but we haven't been successful. A lot of places are doing away with bill and coins and only doing credit cards on their machines. So it's been hard to get replacement parts for that machine.
It's definitely an industry with a rapidly changing environment. I think it was a couple of years ago, you told us that it's almost impossible to buy parking meters anymore.
Yes.
So we have to start transitioning either to more app-based payments or to kiosks. And we all know that there are at least five pretty substantial issues with the app-based environment, including high consumer fees, dependence on a cellular connection, which like the first two blocks of Chambersburg Street, you know, maybe, maybe you can connect, I don't know, I can't. Certain demographics have a more difficult time operating in the app environment. But then kiosks also have their own, their, you know, downsides as well. You gotta walk half a block to get to it and then you realize, oh, I need my license plate, so you gotta walk a half a block back. And then you walk a half a block back to the kiosk and there's all sorts of considerations.
If we put the, like the kiosks out though throughout, you know, at different locations, we're gonna, we're trying to redo a lot of the sidewalks, so we're gonna have to rip them out if they're in those types of places unless they're easy. I don't imagine they're easy to install and disinstall, or they-
I mean, I've not installed one. I know in the parking garage, they're in a, in the concrete in a base and then it just comes right off the base, so you would still have to put that base back in.
Yeah, we did about 10 years ago, we experimented with, I think, three different brands of kiosks around the square. I think we had a different brand on each quadrant or something at one point. They were not super well-received, but it may be time to revisit that. Especially as we start to lose meter inventory and it can't be repaired or replaced. Or reprogrammed.
Correct.
We talked last year during budget season about the desire to push meter fees even maybe beyond where they are now, but we are limited by our inability to actually reprogram them.
If I may add the-
I'm assuming we haven't made any headway on that?
No.
Okay.
No, the, it's true, when we did the pilot of the kiosks on the square, it was largely panned by the public, particularly local public, not necessarily our visitors, who might be more used to this type of technology in other places. The challenge we're going to face moving forward, and it's true, our meter heads are old and dated and obsolete, frankly. And last year was the last year we could reprogram essentially. Mr. Berger suggested we do that and that is done. And there's no ability for us to change them to a different rate now unless we have some kind of extraordinary intervention. The, and Mr. Moon is correct, that this is a profession, a business that is evolving rapidly. And obviously, this is the second-largest income source for the borough, so we do want to be very deliberative about how to protect that revenue stream moving forward and keeping current with technology. And there's a learning curve in the public. If this is where we're going to go, particularly if we ever get the funding for the Baltimore Street revitalization, the recommendation would be to not have meters on Baltimore Street and it would be kiosks, which creates a better aesthetic, creates a better economy of scale. But the public will have to adapt to how to interact with that technology. So there's considerations pro and con for your consideration here. I don't know if that helped or not, but-
So if we, if this estimate here is in fact five machines, at some point, you would have a proposal as to where to deploy two additional machines for testing purposes. Okay. Questions, comments, thoughts?
I'd just like to know a for-sure number, how many this is.
Yeah.
I think that's what you just asked, how many this is and where. But I agree, especially the square and the first block of the square perhaps? That tends to be the most popular for tourists. When I go to downtown Harrisburg, I don't see many meters, I see these kiosks.
Well, so-
And I'd like to see that, especially, and definitely on the Baltimore revitalization area because that, that's the wrong term, revitalization. The Baltimore gateway, the Baltimore streetscape there.
Guess we're gateway.
So more, more-
Connectivity project.
Connectivity project. More info about exactly how many this is and-
So the next lines down say T2 Iris Cosmo Management, $50 per month, and then it comes to 600. So is it possible that's for these kiosks? Is that six kiosks?
Possibly. This also, I mean, we could have, we could get some more answers from the T2. I believe I sent an email out to a few council members about the demo on it and they would have provided some more information as well. I'm still waiting to hear back on, on the time we can demo that.
We have this estimate somewhere, though?
We don't have an exact estimate. We have a price that they quoted, they didn't keep in stone for us because we haven't even demoed this machine.
Oh, I see, I see. Okay, so this is a moving goalpost, we don't actually know what this number is.
This could change because this was months ago whenever this was quoted.
Okay.
Says three Luc2 pay stations, three platform, three wireless modern, three digital connect. This is the quote that I use to populate your budget draft.
So that, is that three kiosks?
Says three Luc2 pay stations. Is that for the garage, I'd imagine? Probably.
I would guess so.
Okay.
So maybe this is not for the streets.
I knew we discussed the streets, I just didn't know what was, and what was exactly put on there. And I do believe that the Luc2, they may have changed the name on it because I don't believe that's the one they were talking about demoing, but like I said, I was waiting on some emails to get, to find out when we could demo this.
Personally, I would say, I would say wait on this. I don't think, you know, it being down one weekend and then, you know, randomly having some minute or two outages justifies the expenditure. And if we're going to move to kiosks in the future with that project, let the project fund it then, that's how I feel.
Yeah, I would, I would be curious to see if the performance on our existing equipment improves once it has a wired connection or not. But I'd also like to make sure that we know that like everybody on staff knows how to restart those when they're, when they're hung up, et cetera, even on the weekends when you might not be about. So I would also, I would echo Peter's sentiment, maybe we wait and see on this.
I would agree with that. Hold off.
Totally, yep.
Okay. All right, so we can make some adjustments there. All right, any other questions or comments about Department 445?
I would also just say, if we know that that was an issue last year, for the coming Christmas festival, if we can reach out and be proactive and say like, hey, you know, please, we could have more issues, you know, than normal at this time, you make sure that, I don't know if they, I don't, I know you can't make them like staff if they're not there on weekends, but maybe there's some other solution.
I have already tested it, but anything can happen. I mean, two years in a row, they did it to us, so. And it's not just, I mean, every minute it goes out, there are issues with them occasionally. And I think Mr. Moon gets those complaints more than I do sometimes. And sometimes, sometimes I hear them from him, but, and I don't believe it's just wired connections too, but they're, so we'll see, I mean, if- But there, so we'll see, I mean, if that's, if that's what happens when we, you know, we get internet, if that's what hopefully maybe that is the case, but.
Guess we'll find out. All right. In the meantime, will you be able to continue to try to source, you know, bill or acceptor or whatever, or can they be?
I've been trying for two years.
Oh, yeah. Oh, is that my gosh. So can they be reconfigured to just eliminate the bill acceptors or?
That's what it is for now.
Is that right?
I mean, it just doesn't accept bills. So it accepts coins and credit cards.
Okay.
So.
Uh, I just did the math that removing that takes your deficit down to 311.
Great. All right.
I, I would like to just say though, going back to four, uh, 115, that was the part-time staff. This, the, the, there's some names there and they're incorrect, but, um, I currently do only have three staff members. Um, I could use a fourth one. Uh, we do run into issues with, um, you know, uh, wait, uh, hours and things. So i- if you do the math on, you know, a salary, let's say of 7,000 for part-time, that's 32 hours for a month roughly. So that's eight hours a week. There's not a lot of people I can find that will work eight hours a week. You know, most people, if they want part-time, they want more. So I'm either having less part-time people or I'm having more part-time and giving less hours. So I actually would, would have liked to raise that amount if at all possible.
What was the number? What page was that on?
Oh, 115.
Page 128. 445, 115.
So that is, uh, represents a 29% increase over what was budgeted in 2025. And year to date through the end of August, uh, we are currently just over 20,000 in this line item, which is why I increased it to 238.
So there's four names up there, but you're saying that that's not correct? Is that right?
I have not had four.
Names are just placeholders. We can allocate these hours.
So we have it, we have allocated four. Okay.
These are just estimates based on past work history. But I, I did increase this line item 29% over what was budgeted in 2025.
Okay.
Budgeted 18, 3 last year for 2025.
All right. Any other comments in this section? All right. Thank you, Becca. Uh, 454 Parks Recreation and Grounds. Uh, 454, 135 Contracted Services. Here we have a capital improvement plan project for Gettysburg Interloop Phase B1. $17,000 to Michael Baker International for part of it and 42-ish for Michael Baker's Section 107 task, 106 task. So this is going to be what? The design on Phase B1?
Yeah, this is just the environmental tasks.
Okay.
Section 106, we, we just went through a year-long process in the Gettysburg Welcome Center on that. We'll have to do something similar, uh, for the segment of the interloop.
Chad, can you jump on the microphone there and tell us a little bit about Phase B1 again? Just bring it up to, bring us all to speed.
So Phase B1, we jumped over, when we went to Phase B2, um, on North Washington Street, we jumped over the piece of Racehorse Alley.
Yeah.
We did talk about making it one way. That decision was already made. Reason we jumped over that was because Gettysburg Municipal Authority was coming through with the interceptor. And they're pretty much done with that project or they're gonna be finished here pretty soon with their part on, on Racehorse Alley. So now we're going back to that, that piece that we jumped over and completing that. And, and this is just for the environmental, we're, we're looking to try to get funds from PennDOT to pay for the construction. If we need to get those funds, we're gonna have to go through the environmental screening process. Uh, the numbers that you have here is very consistent with what we just had to do with the, with the Welcome Center. I think the Welcome Center was close to 70,000. If you add these two ups, just over 60 here, so.
Great. So, I mean, as we talk about the inner loop for, you know, low these last 20 years or so, um, this is something we've had to take in bite-sized chunks. We've done several sections now. Uh, this section in particular is probably one of the most desperate in need of rehabilitation. Racehorse Alley is, um.
It's bad.
I mean, it was a lunar landscape before the storm water work went through this summer, but it's, it's super bad now. The connecting, the work on the first phase that goes up through Buford Avenue and then the new phase we just completed would be a substantial move for the, the borough. So does anybody have any, um, reason not to include this in this year's budget?
Just as FYI, while you're contemplating that question, uh, at the end of this week, we will be applying for the Transportation Alternatives Grant, which would be the funding of the construction of this. So this is laying the groundwork for hopefully a grant to be awarded.
All right. Everybody okay with that? Okay. 352 Liability Insurance. 356 Insurance Property. 359 Commercial Umbrella. 368 Utilities Stormwater. This includes the Gettysburg Welcome Center, GARA. Uh, 530 Appropriation Governmental Units for GARA, $80,000. Charles, can you define that for me, please?
Uh, yeah, this is our annual contribution to GARA for operational needs. Uh, we are on a, on a path where we give them about 2% increase annually. So that's what's reflected here.
So just to translate that, we own the rec park land, we rent it to GARA, and then we budget money for them to pay us rent. I mean, this is always.
They don't really pay us. This is, this is more for their operational needs.
Sure.
I, I think, uh, I think that lease is like a buck.
Right. Uh, 550 Appropriations for Special Events. This is, uh, money we set aside to underwrite the permits. Um, over the last five years, we saw the costs of permits start to climb precipitously. The, uh, security landscape of the time we live in is considerably more intense than it used to be. Those costs go up. Many of these events are put on by nonprofits or by community organizations. And as the prices increase, the threat to the livelihood of these events started to grow. It is hard to fundraise for some of these things. So, um, this is monies we have set aside every year to help underwrite those permitting costs.
I would note that last year, we actually decreased the level of support for these events. Uh, so the Halloween parade, for example, was at 1250, uh, in the, the budget year 2024. Uh, so in 2025, we, we dialed this back a little bit and I'm proposing keeping them steady.
Okay. Questions, comments?
I just think for the public, it's important to note that the, these, if you are an event organizer in the borough, that bill is gonna be substantially different from the number that you're seeing there. So this is a very, it's a very tiny, but yet generous offer of support for the borough, from the borough to our borough residents and visitors for these wonderful events. But the organizers are definitely paying a giant amount.
That's a great point, Member Carr. I, I think this is a great time to highlight. Obviously, these are great community building events and they're just vital to our civic life here. But, you know, we just had the, a wonderful Halloween parade last week. Uh, I believe the budget for that parade is actually $13,000.
Sounds about right.
Uh, and of which we provide 1,000. And then, uh, the event sponsor or the event organizers raised the, the balance of that. Uh, the Christmas festival, uh, there's a larger allotment there because Main Street Gettysburg produces a $90,000 event annually. Uh, it's not cheap to host the Christmas festival. But the economic rewards that come back on that are substantial. So thank you for pointing that out.
And I just wanna raise up that, again, that, um, I believe every single one of these events that are listed are traditionally beautiful events for our town. Lots of visitors, just the Halloween parade alone. We must all realize that that is not just the borough residents that are coming to that, which is great. But these are all attendance admission, admission-free events for the community. So I just raise up thank you to the organizers, um, cause it is a big bill.
Thank you to our organizers, past and present. All right. Anything else on that?
Yeah, we're looking at you.
All right. 455 Shade Tree. 455, 135 Contracted Services. That's gonna be for trees. Uh, 455, 220 Miscellaneous Operating Supplies. 455, 221 Agricultural Supplies Shade Tree Purchases. 455, 379 Repair and Maintenance to Shade Trees. They have an overall annual budget of, uh, it looks like $20,000. Rarely do they spend it, but we hope they will.
About halfway through this year.
Any questions, comments? All right. 465 Community Development. 465, 541 Non-Governmental Appropriations, Main Street Gettysburg. That's the, uh, utilized for MSG's operational costs. 465, 3, 543, let me go back. 465, 541 Non-Governmental Appropriations, Main Street Gettysburg Operational Funds. Money well spent. Uh, the, the work, um, Main Street Gettysburg does for this community is immeasurable. It's not just a Christmas festival. It's grant writing. It is, um, advocating for us at the state and federal level. It is putting together, uh, plans for how we attract business and entrepreneurship and development to the borough. It's a two-person team and this is money well spent. 465, 543 Non-Governmental Appropriations Rabbit Transit. This is a contribution we make to Rabbit Transit. 465, 545 Non-Governmental Appropriation Arts Council. 547 Film Commission. Uh, that's the end of that department. Any comments, questions on any of those expenses? All right. 492 Interfund Transfers Out. Transfers to CDBG. Charles, I'll let you drive on this one.
Yeah, so CDBG is a reimbursement grant. So the borough needs to spend the money upfront and then, uh, we submit those invoices to the county planning office, who administers these funds on our behalf. Uh, so, uh, you'll see here a full accounting of not just this budget year, but previous budget years. So everyone can keep track of the program year versus the year that the funds are actually spent. And it gets a little, little wonky to, to follow, to follow that. That's why we hired John. Uh, he does a great job of keeping us, uh, on the straight and narrow on this. So, uh, 2023 and 2024 funds, um, have already been, um, transferred over into the Fund Four. Uh, so when you look at that, you'll see the, the, the revenue in on that. And then at previous meetings, council has authorized the use of, uh, these funds for ADA ramps. So, uh, Borough Engineer Clayball will, uh, provide us with, uh, the list of ADA ramps he would like to, to get accomplished. So in the next calendar year, we'll be using 2023 funds, uh, which have already been transferred into Fund Four. Uh, and then 2024, we'll use those again, um, in a sub, in a subsequent year. And then if you remember, we had the conversation a few weeks ago, maybe a couple of months ago now, uh, where council wanted to pivot from ADA ramps. So, yeah, for programming in 2025, uh, we'll be using the child advocacy, um, program. Um, and you can see that's accounted for here. So, um, we will be transferring 2025 funds to Fund Four in 2026. And then as the funds are drawn down and for the 2023 funds, that will show up in Fund One as an offsetting revenue. It'll come in under Department 363 as reimbursements. And you'll see that when we start talking about revenues. Explain that good? Okay.
Okay. Any questions?
It's clear as mud, I know.
We won't go to the next page. That's the end of Fund One. Did we miss anything there? I don't think so.
So, uh, the question I have before the council is, is there anything you wanna tweak or modify or have questions on?
All right. So did anything jump out at you over these last two meetings as something, um, that you'd like to discuss? Especially those, well, exclusively those discretionary fund items?
Just keep in mind, you did make progress. Uh, you're down to three, a whole of 311. Talking about how to fill that when we get into the revenue side of this.
Um, something that I have been thinking about, which is very small, but we briefly touched on last meeting, paying for the subscription of Zoom, which, as we mentioned, isn't necessarily a lot of the money. But when you look at some of the other things in this budget, specifically like the neutering program where it's $50 per cat to neuter. I look at what we're paying on, paying for Zoom, which we could get the same services from using Microsoft Teams. And like, that could neuter three more cats. So even though it's still a small amount of money, I think it could be used in more helpful ways. So I think not paying for Zoom, using Microsoft Teams instead just makes more sense to me.
I don't disagree. They're both terrible.
That was, that was gonna be my, my, my comment as well.
Teams is precipitously more terrible. I think that's.
Yeah, and, and when we are doing, um, our challenge is trying to meet everyone where their technological abilities are. And so if, if we only had a, a need for online meetings internally with staff, I'm sure Teams works really well. But, uh, now next week, we're gonna be zooming in for another, uh, to an event organizer who is not part of the borough infrastructure. He lives in New Jersey. And Teams is a challenge for him. So, uh, we are gonna be using Zoom for that call. But I, I, I hear your point. It's, uh, so if council wants to cut Zoom, I'm not gonna, you know, lose sleep over it. So.
Anyone have a strong opinion?
Are most of your meetings, I don't know how many meetings you have a year on Zoom for borough business, are most of them?
It's gone way down.
Are most of them under 40 minutes?
Uh, I, I don't know the length, but I know the, the, the volume of Zoom calls is precipitously dropped since the pandemic is, it was over. And we are primarily using Teams.
I would, I mean, it's not a whole lot of money to, to cut out of the budget. I also, um, an old boss's voice in my head says, don't jeopardize a 3 million and we're more than that, a million operational budget to save $200. But, um, with Zoom, you could have a free meeting and then just start it over if you happen to go over 40 minutes.
Oh, I, I, yeah, that.
So I, I, I'm indifferent. Both Zoom and Teams are horrible, but, uh, I'm indifferent there. I, I agree with you either way.
Oh, Maddie and I learned recently, there's another one too. Like, we didn't know. There's a bunch. Yeah. We're, we're both late for the meeting cause we're like, I don't know how to do that on my phone.
Some people send us meetings for Google and I'm like, uh, then you gotta figure out how to, you know, change your microphone and camera settings and, yeah.
It was terrible. All right. All right. So we're looking at around three hundred eleven thousand dollars. So I guess the next stop, step would be, how do we want to plug that hole?
Do we want to start talking about revenue now?
Yeah, I think we could.
I did have one, where did we land on the broadcasting? We're funding those other, the planning meetings and?
It sounded to me last week that everybody was favoring that, both planning and Harb. Personally, I think it opens the door for all of our ABCs to be demanded, because this week, this meeting is important to this one person, which is how we ended up here. I mean, yeah, each individual meeting is only a couple hundred bucks, but all told, I mean, we have twenty meetings, and then now we're adding at least ten to twelve for planning, and we're going to add at least ten for Harb. And, you know. I, I.
The billing rate is two seventy per broadcast.
So, I mean, we're looking at, you know, roughly forty meetings a year now, at three hundred bucks a piece. And I, I understand the argument for accessibility, but as we saw today, this building is perfectly accessible for a hundred people if they want to come to all these meetings. I don't really have a strong opinion either way, but, you know, I do think it opens the door for every other single public meeting that the borough hosts as well.
I don't see a demand for that. I, I think you're saying it'll set a precedent, but I'm on GMA. Nobody comes to the meetings.
I went to one.
You sound hurt.
But, but like I said, as a council member, it is very helpful, because Harb and planning is super important for us to keep abreast on, and.
There, there have been a few, a few Harb meetings of late I wish there was a recording of, I will tell you that.
So to Member Bales's question, you're looking at four fourteen to eighteen. Right now, the draft budget has twelve Harb meetings for thirty-two forty, and twelve Planning Commission meetings for thirty-two forty. So you would save, you know, sixty-five hundred-ish dollars there.
Okay, thank you.
Relatively small expense in a seven million dollar budget. There is an added level of transparency and accessibility for the public.
And, and my only other question, and maybe that's it, this is a consideration for future like capital improvement projects, but for the police department, and I mentioned this when we discussed the new Public Works Building, possibly adding that on. I don't think that that was possible, but in the future, is it something that we need to look at as far as the continued, you know, growth and, and, you know, just the future of the police department in general? Or is that not a concern at all? Because I've heard different things.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we, we definitely would love more space. I mean, that's one thing we're lacking now for storage and, you know, officers. Places where they can, workstations and stuff like that, as we grow, we're definitely going to want more space. As far as, you know, limited parking in the back for even the officers, you know, personal vehicles, and even the spaces for our, our current patrol vehicles, we're, we're limited. Like my vehicle, we have a, you know, enclosed gated area back there. My vehicle has to park against the fence, and we risk, you know, somebody backing into them or something like that. So more space would definitely be preferable, but, you know, it all depends on the budget.
I can ask, answer a little bit more to that. Your facility as it exists would not pass accreditation standards. You need to have a, a more secure storage areas for your pass-through evidence, temporary evidence storage. You've done great workarounds, and I give all the credit in the world to the Gettysburg Police Department. But if an assessor was coming in here to look at your agency objectively from the standpoint of accredited agencies, you don't meet those standards. So the recommendation I would make to you is, as Chris has said, start planning for the future. Start budgeting some monies for the future with an eye on things like accessibility, better use of space. You guys definitely need storage. There's, there's, there's no way about it, you need storage. And some of the more thoughtful aspects of access to the facility and securing of certain areas of the facility.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
So we're leaving Harb and Planning Commission?
Everybody wanted those in or out?
I think it's important to have them, yes.
In, in.
Sure. All right.
Just one more comment on that. Not only do I think it's important to have them for transparency reasons, but it's important to have them because the public has asked for them. And if you recall, the last budget workshop, I voiced that, and I asked, anyone who doesn't want them, we better hear from you. I didn't get an email or a phone call. I don't know if any of my colleagues did, that didn't want it. Thank you.
Anyone got that resolved? All right, so what's next, Charles?
If you want to start talking about how to fill the hole, we can.
Yep.
So let's, let's start over in Three Sixty-three. Actually, that's parking. Kind of reverse engineer this, if we will. This is your biggest department aside from property tax revenue. We are experiencing record revenue streams based on Members Burger's suggestion last year on how you balance your budget in twenty twenty-five. Year-to-date, we are outpacing previous years, but I think we're going to be very close to the estimate of the bottom line of one point six million dollars. We might be a little bit over that, but until I see the numbers come through in December, which is our first full year of testing the new revenue, or the new meter rates, I'd be uncomfortable going above the one-six. So that's why I kept this just slightly below what we projected for twenty twenty-five. Just a conservative estimate there. Anyone have any misgivings on my thinking on that? Can see how this was arrived at in the various locations. With two hour, two dollar an hour coins, our experience with app, app-only zones.
Nope. Anyone?
Okay. All right, so let's, let's work backwards, let's do that. I don't expect anything in refund from prior year's expenses. Typically, if you will see something popular in this department, it would usually come in the form of a reimbursement check from PIMIC, which is our healthcare cooperative. Our usage in the last couple of years has been high, so our reimbursements have been low over the last couple of years. So I, I'm, I'm, I would suggest just keeping this at zero, and if something comes in, it's a bonus.
Yep.
This is the final drawdown on ARPA funds in Department Three Ninety-two. There will be a little bit more than three seventy-eight based on how much interest is accumulated between now and when we transfer the funds in the beginning part of twenty twenty-six. So three seventy-eight is kind of the principal that's currently sitting there for, for use.
Yep.
Three ninety is other financing sources. So our friends over at Spectre Coat give us a check every year to help pay for our insurance. It's only five hundred bucks, but it's the, it's the sentiment that matters there more than anything else. And you'll see a new revenue stream that is new next year. It's the Gettysburg Welcome Center Endowment for Operational Costs. Main Street Gettysburg has successfully raised just over three hundred thousand of the one million dollar goal. That money is sitting with the community foundation, and we will begin to receive those interest payments on that three hundred thousand. So that's where that's coming from. Obviously, if we get to a million, this eleven thousand significantly increases as a revenue stream. Culture and Rec, it's a small kind of, we can't really predict on which corporations or private citizens or which kind of donations come in. So generally speaking, it's, it falls into the fifteen hundred dollar range annually. We just went through Three Sixty-three, just parking. Three sixty-one, charges for services. So this is all of our reimbursements essentially. So you can see here, we have the regulated rental for Three Sixty-one, Three Forty-two. We anticipate raising about twenty-three thousand dollars through the inspections of our rental properties in town. Accident reports are always interesting in that we just can't ever really predict how many people request those historically over the last year or so. The request for those has gone up, that is why it's up two hundred percent projected for next year. The big one, the big ones here are the reimburse, the reimbursements. So eight oh one. Eight oh two, eight oh three, eight oh four. These are all different types of services that the, the borough will put out. And then these are sometimes reimbursed through a grant, sometimes reimbursed through event fees. And then, of course, they are categorized based on the department that, that has provided the service. So all said and told, the big one there is the Stormwater Authority, because they, they reimburse the borough for some of our salaries and, and benefits.
Right.
And they also incorporate, pay a portion of insurances and other utility bills. I don't want to belabor this too much. Oh, here we go, the CDBG, so you can see the, the, the transfers in for next year. So for program year twenty-three and twenty-four, so all said and told, about four hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars in revenue.
But all stuff we do not directly control.
Correct. Uh, this is our Pillow Tax. Hovers just about a hundred seventy-five thousand, maybe just a tick north of a hundred seventy-five thousand annually. So I didn't see a reason to really adjust that number up or down. Three fifty-five, state shared revenues. PERTA, public utility tax, this is scripted by the state. It comes to us around this time every year. It hovers around the same number every year as well. Same with alcohol beverage licenses, and then pension state aid. That is typically going up a little bit, but that's a formula that's provided by our actuaries and determined by the, the state. And so I wanted to increase that a little bit based on our experience there. The same with foreign fire insurance premiums. So that's another three hundred and forty-four thousand. Nothing we can really control. Tiny revenue streams, state operating grants, this is where you're going to find your Act One-O-One recycling grant. This is tick downwards. Deb, do you have an idea of how much? Well, it looks like it went down about twenty percent, based on what I put in here. And that's a direct result of the reporting that we're getting from our waste haulers, who are supposed to report tonnage of recyclables to us. And I, I think we all fear what's happening there. And hopefully, we can rectify that when we go out to bid next year for our new waste hauler contract. Again, not a lot we can do to control this revenue source. Federal grants, very tiny. It's hard to know exactly if we're going to be awarded any of those, so it's just a very tiny. Rent royalties, this is our small cell sites. We have the Verizon small cell sites on top of some of our traffic signals throughout town. And Verizon does pay us rent for that, to the tune of just over forty-two thousand a year. Interest earnings is fairly sizable based on our general fund reserve. Right now, we have about eighteen percent of your annual budget in general fund reserves, which is consistent with your fund balance policy. It would be better to have twenty-five percent, which is the, the upper end of that threshold per your policy. Policy says you just have between eighteen and twenty-five percent of general fund reserves available. But it is over a million dollars. So that is why you have forty-four thousand dollars in projected interest revenue next year. Fines and forfeit, this is, things come through the court system essentially. Fines and forfeits, clerk of courts, code violations. This is fairly new, based on your quality of life ordinance. So we are projecting, first year out of the box, maybe three hundred and fifty dollars worth of ticket fines for code violations. And then your state police fines and your parking tickets are also budgeted here. All combined, three hundred eighty-one thousand dollars. It's hard to know how many tickets are going to be issued in a year, so this is kind of a, a rolling average every year. Non-business licenses and permits will generate about thirty-four thousand. So recycling permits, building permits through the Planning Director's Office. Land use permits, again, a parking, or not a parking, a planning department revenue stream. Three twenty-two is business licenses, so yard sales, regulated rental unit licenses, transit retail licenses, outdoor dining. That's kind of been creeping up in recent years. It's a little higher than we've had in, in previous years. A lot of this might pivot or hinge on your fee resolution. This is an area that you would be able to control. You could probably ink out a few more dollars in revenue here if you tinker with the square footage. So I think, do you remember what the, the current rate is per square foot?
Four twenty-five.
Four twenty, four dollars twenty-five cents per square foot is the, the rate right now in your fee resolution on that. So any desire on, would you have a recommendation either way on that?
It had previously been raised, recently it was two dollars per square foot. So there already has been increase, and we're not, we're seeing limited change going forward. So that's not one we've necessarily recommended at this point, but.
Okay. So a lot of this department is related to your fee resolution. Do you want to talk about some of these?
So I, I think we should finish the seven pages of revenues here, and I think that our next meeting is going to be.
Dedicated to the fee resolution.
Fee resolution and deciding on our strategies here.
Okay. Local enabling tax, again, these are state authorized taxes. They're generally stable throughout course of time. Not a lot to mention here, local services. Amusement tax, emissions tax has gone up in recent years. So that is a revenue stream that's directly related to the number of amusement tickets that are sold. So, you know, the Majestic Theater voluntarily pays this to the borough. Every ghost tour, on a ticket purchased for ghost tours, is part of, of this revenue stream here. Mechanical devices has gone up a little bit in the borough as well, but, you know, as a standalone, it's not huge. But all combined, the whole department is significant at one point two million. Occupation tax, again, a state authorized tax, about seventeen thousand. And then the big one, this one you do control. This is your property tax. So I, I, I put a few things in here just for, so we can kind of have a discussion, but I did not populate them as it relates to the whole of 311. So last year, council authorized an increase in millage of .3796 mils, which at a discount accounted for about $162,000 at par, about $19,000 and at penalty, about $9,500. Year to date, we're a little below what we projected in collecting last year and that could be for a number of reasons. Either people have just chosen not to pay yet or properties have been reassessed to a lower value. So we're, we're close to meeting these projections from last year, but we're just, just a little, little off. I put in the orange box what was much mentioned tonight at the public hearing about the importance of increasing any way possible essentially, the assessed tax value of, of the borough. And so the number that I recently used was a number that I was told by the developer that, that his project is a $57 million project. Based at our current millage rate, that would generate $259,000 just for Gettysburg Borough. There are other benefits to the county and the school district for that, but that's just for the borough's portion. So when you have a whole 311, you can see what a Gettysburg station style project does generate for the borough. But we don't have that yet. That's why it's in yellow and it's not going to be part of our, our math today. But moving forward, I think the community as a whole needs to come to grips with, and I understand the argument of 48 feet, but the trade off is you're going to continue to raise taxes significantly just to keep pace with our ever increasing expenditures. And that's not because you're spending frivolously, it's because of outside forces, whether that's contracts or healthcare or just general inflationary pressures. And I'm, I'm sorry, but I have not heard from any of the opponents where you're going to raise that kind of revenue, especially at 48 feet. That's all the comment I'll make about that. But if you add in another tax increase similar to last year, and remember, last year's tax increase was, was implemented to pay for one of the two police officer positions that council authorized years prior. So let's do the math real quick. So if we just assume we're going to make 162 at par and 19,100. I'm sorry, that was at discount, the 19,000 is at par. And then if you're paying at a penalty, it'll be 9,500. That would reduce your deficit to $121,000. Which if you remember, when I gave my budget presentation in the first draft of it, I suggested a combination of the tax revenue and then using a modest amount of reserves to balance. So that would be my, that, that remains my recommendation and you can see the math here. So if you want to go that route, you would be drawing down 121,000 in reserves and then another tax increase to match what was done last year to pay for our 14th officer.
Okay. So I think I'd like to stop there for the night. When we resume on the third, I think that will most likely be our last meeting on this. We probably will not need the extra meeting on the fourth. We need to land on how we want to plug a $311,000 hole and we will also have to go through the entirety of the fee resolution. Am I missing anything else?
No.
Okay. So before us, we have three genuine options for how to plug a $300,000 hole. One, we can go back into the entire document and find 300,000, $311,000 of discretionary spending and cut it. Two, we can pay for the entire shortfall out of capital reserves, but that leaves us in a much weaker position to do capital improvement projects.
General fund reserves.
Sorry, general fund reserves. It leaves us in a worse position when it comes to matching dollars for grant applications. It leaves us in a weaker position should we have some calamitous emergency. Or the third option is what Manager Gable has suggested, which is a modest increase that was very similar to last year's or maybe exactly equal to last year's and about $120,000 out of our reserves. So think about which of those is most desirable to you and we will discuss that again next week. All right, so we will put the budget aside for tonight. Thank you all for robust discussion. It's going to take us back to our second public comment section of the evening. This section is not reserved to items appearing on tonight's agenda. You can speak on any topic you like. We do ask that you use the podium. Please use the microphone, state your name and address of residence and please limit your comment to five minutes. Let's find out what all the buzz is about. Is that microphone on? Is there a green light on the base down here? Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Hi, everybody. My name is Lauren Osborne and this is our Getty Bug. I am a writer, a professor at Gettysburg College and published in the field of entomology. So more than four score and seven insect species go extinct every day. In the past 20 years, scientists have borne witness to a 22% reduction of butterfly species in the United States, an alarming 40% annual loss of our beloved bee colonies. Other pollinators face a similar fate. Humans and animals depend on insects for survival. Insects pollinate our fruits and vegetables, feed birds and wildlife, and fulfill vital ecological roles such as decomposition. Without insects, life as we know it would be impossible. This is why I'm addressing this audience today, to bring attention to the dangerous path humanity is heading towards, the insect apocalypse. As citizens of this wonderful community and of planet Earth, there are a few steps we can take in this moment to help slow the decline of pollinators. First, leave the leaves in your yard this fall. Leaves provide cover and warmth in the winter for pollinating insects such as butterflies and bees. A single thin layer of leaves will be sufficient habitat for hibernating bugs and can also benefit the health of your lawn. Second, cease spraying harmful pesticides in your garden. Pesticides are a primary driver of pollinator decline and seep into the freshwater poisoning humans and insects alike. And third, consider leaving 30% of your lawn for local wildflower growth this spring. If everyone can commit just 30% of their lawn to natural growth, we can create vital micro habitats for pollinators to survive. As humans, we're storytellers. Our advantage is spreading information through communication. I beg you to please help spread this message to your friends, your family and your neighbors. Leave the leaves, limit pesticides and plant local wildflowers for pollinators. If we work together as a community, there's a chance we can create a movement so that people and insects shall not perish, but live together in prosperity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I even start, thank you to Bill Mooney for showing his support tonight in his Getty's Bug Finest. The Getty's Bug Address will get a revival soon, I'm sure. Now I could do the doom and gloom approach because it is that serious, but let's take a different path. How often do you feel hopeless in the face of the atrocities of this world? What we're coming to you about today is something tangible. It is a real way to make solid progress towards ecological balance. Our actions can protect farmers, protect the food chain, protect all of us. With just a few tangible steps, we can make a significant difference in the face of species decline. The most pressing directive is of course to leave the leaves. We must leave the leaves where they lay and not disturb the ground on which they settle. Beyond this, we are campaigning for public lands to be transitioned to native plants as much as possible, creating habitats for pollinators and the like. We are planning to work with a coalition of groups throughout town, coming together to make transitions easy in both the public and private sectors. If we transition roughly a third of our yards to natural habitats, either planting native plants or at least not mowing, then we can significantly uphold the ecosystem. If there are codes that must be visited for people to do this, then we must visit them. The effort we're planning to make is expansive and we want to invite everyone here to be a part of it as much as possible. We are all one team. This is a group effort. We're reaching out to everyone from artists to landscapers to prepare for this info tour. We're exploring options from block parties to the Pollinator Festival, figuring out what can be the most helpful to people in making this transition. Pamphlets are coming and ideally also seed packets. Together, we can make this a sanctuary for the Getty's Bugs. And I will reiterate, this feels like the one tangible thing I've heard suggested that we can do to actually make a difference in the face of the world's eco insanity. Giving back to nature, that would be real change. So having this one thing, we're going to hold on to it. We're going to inform and inform till we have a movement because there's already something moving. Everyone we've brought this up to has been immediately impassioned. The possibility of making change for the better is so exciting. And if you work with us, the possibility of small town governments making real change for the good of all who live in their areas, all species, is ignited. If we all work together, this becomes another facet of what makes Gettysburg a tourist hub. We can be a destination for birders because we keep their birds well fed. But more than that, we can become known for the ability to make real change. That alone is something incredible. Please make the new boulevard a home to pollinator habitats aplenty. Please be open to change. Please work with us because this is it. We are protecting the lives of future generations by protecting our ecosystem now. We are in the state of emergency. This is the moment when we got to turn it around. So let's do it. Let's turn it around together. Thank you.
Before you walk away, can you give us your name and address, please?
I'm Kayla Martin. I live at 217 East Middle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Mooney, 151 West High Street. For purposes of like this, I am the Getty's Bug. I appreciate the borough's consideration in this regard, especially with the upcoming Gateway Gettysburg Project and making that boulevard a habitat to protect our insects and to encourage homeowners to have habitats on their property and that penalize them for tall grass. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comment? Please.
Well, I have a very big mouth, so I can speak from here.
We need you to use the microphone, please, so it can be heard on the camera. Then I definitely want that heard.
I know how difficult it is to prepare these budgets and stuff and I just want to take the opportunity to thank everybody who works on them. I know how hard it is and I don't think you're appreciated for what you do. So thank you.
Thank you. Would you mind stating your name for the record as well?
Darlene Brown, 355 West High Street.
Thank you, ma'am. Public comment. All right. Seeing none, we will adjourn to executive session. Thank you, everybody.